Let's go ahead and call the meeting to order, please. This is the Canton City Council Work Session, June 4th, 2015. And if you would, please stand and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance and remain standing for the invocation.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mr. Young?
Lord, please help us to make the best decisions that we can in our discussions about the issues facing our city and help us to be an example to our citizens of good government in action. Amen.
Amen. Thank you. I'd like to welcome our guest investors tonight, and I will entertain a motion to approve the agenda.
So moved.
We have a motion in a second. Any other changes or corrections or anything, additions? If not, those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. All members voting for the motion. You have, as part of your agenda package, the minutes from May 21st, council meeting. Are there any corrections or changes to be made to those? If not, I'll entertain a motion to approve those minutes.
So moved.
Have a motion in a second. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. All members voting for the motion. Minutes approved as presented. You also have in your agenda package the financials through April, and these financials here are just for informational purposes only, so if anyone has any questions or comments regarding those, we'll entertain that. We will now move to our ten-minute public input period, and we have a number of people that would like to speak. Carol Mahofer, I'm not sure I pronounced that right, and I apologize if I didn't, but come forward if you will, please. Yes, ma'am.
So, I'll be brief. Hi, my name is Carol Mahofer, and I live in Ball Ground, Georgia, but we shop and do business in Canton, Georgia, and I'm coming to you about smoking on public walkways. And I understand that, you know, I did all this preparation about the dangers of secondhand smoke, but you guys have that in your ordinances and you know about that. So what I'm asking you is, there's a fifteen-foot buffer in front of the doorways that you're not supposed to smoke, and I'm here to say that's not enough, because you still have to hold your breath to go in and out of a public establishment, so you don't have to walk through the clouds of smokers. On the sidewalks, like at Riverstone Plaza, people, employees of the store and other people stand on the sidewalk and they smoke, and so in order to get in and out of these places of business, you have to hold your breath or walk through the smoke. When it's raining, people who don't smoke are out in the rain in order to get shelter from the rain, while people who smoke enjoy those awnings because they can. Also, recently, I was at the coffee shop where it's posted as non-smoking, and, you know, if I see somebody smoking in the non-smoking area, I'll go and gently remind them, hey, did you know this is non-smoking? People are generally very nice, but the last two times, people were extremely rude and didn't put the cigarette out, and you go and you talk to the management of the coffee shop, and they're in this awkward position where they don't want to confront smokers. And I don't blame them, you know, but somebody needs to police and enforce the no-smoking thing, but I'm asking you to consider, to think, to observe, because the weather's warm, you know, people are out, to consider, just to look and consider, that fifteen feet is not enough. Make the sidewalks, the walkways in front of those establishments smoke-free. There was a college in Hickory, North Carolina, Catawba Valley Community College, that had the same problem, where the students and teachers had to walk through clouds of smoke to get in and out of buildings, and they fixed the problem. They made the entire campus non-smoking. And so now the smokers go behind the buildings in the corners and, you know, away from the entrances. So I'm just asking you to look, to consider, to observe, to enforce, and leave you on this final note, the hospitals, the campuses are non-smoking, and I ask everybody here, have you seen one, one parking lot that's not littered with cigarette butts? Just one, in the city? So, you know, there's an issue with smoking on a lot of different fronts. And finally, I've talked to the people at Chick-fil-A and at Starbucks at the drive-thru, and people go through these drive-throughs, hang in their cigarettes outside the window, they go up, they place their order, and they blow smoke on these teenagers inside the establishment. And it, I hear about it, and so I just want to pass that along to you. Thank you.
Well, thank you very much. You make some very good points there, I think, you know. I tend to agree with you very much on the fifteen feet. I'm not sure exactly how it works downtown when you got doors that are within fifteen feet of one another, and, you know, they can't go out in the street, I guess. Maybe they could. Going to get killed one way or the other with that, right?
Right, right.
Cigarettes.
It's not the onus of the government to provide a place for them to indulge in their habit, but it is everybody's responsibility to watch out for public safety, and we all know the dangers of secondhand smoke, so thank you very much.
Thank you. I think that's something for us to give some thought to. Janice Bolkowitz, did I pronounce that one right? Is that okay? Okay. Okay. Yes, ma'am. Okay. Thank you.
Hi, I live in Longleaf, Laurel Canyon, and on May 20th, we attended a meeting with Jason Garman regarding the proposed gate at Soleil, which has been a topic all along. The gate where they are proposing it is going to block our exit getting out of our cottage. It's also going to block the exit of the golf there, fairways of Canton. The golf course has been doing really well, and they support tournaments of two-hundred-plus golfers, and if a truck is at the entrance to Soleil trying to get in, they have to wait for approval. So if you have a car or a truck, they're going to block the, you are not going to be able to get out, and I would think that if you block the golfers enough and make enough of a traffic jam for them, I think they just won't come back. They'll probably just find another golf course. Callahan's is down the way. The other thing is, the gate, the position where it's at, is going to block Golf View, which is the one subdivision, right directly opposite our cottage. So the residents of Golf View will have to go to Soleil, make a U-turn to come out to go into their residence, and they're going to be behind a, they're going to be behind a backup, a traffic jam. And when I mentioned this, Jason said that they never thought of that. So I'm thinking they did think of it, they were just hoping we didn't think of it. So I would like to have additional thought given to putting the gate further back. They are also blocking off Overlook, Laurel Overlook, that's the street that we used to get to our cottage, and now that will be behind the gate, so we will lose that, we will have to go all the way around to get to the cottage. I guess my thought is not to block us in until every option is thought about, because once the gate is moved down there, and once it's there, it's done. So before this happens and before they gate it in, because their only goal is to gate in as much as possible behind their community for Soleil. So I would like you to give it additional consideration before the approval is put in. They speed on that hill all the time, and there are a ton of golf carts up and down that hill, so at some point, that might also cause a problem.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you.
Thank you. You know, this is, that issue is going before the Planning Commission on the fifteenth. Yes, ma'am.
But the part that surprised me most was that, as he's telling us this, and we, as he's showing us the artist's renderings, and we are pointing this out to him, he's saying nobody ever thought of that. I highly doubt that, that no one ever thought of that, and just little old me sitting in the front row with one of my neighbors, just, we were the only ones that thought of it? I don't think so. I think they were hoping that it would fly by before anybody voiced it.
Could be.
Could be. Thank you very much.
Yes, ma'am. Thank you. Johnny Bickford?
I live in Golf, Golf View. It's where the gate's going to be, like, right here, and literally, my sub-street is, like, right there. You go across my street and you go right into the cottage. And I was driving there today, I'm not going to repeat everything she said, but here's the gate, say the gate's right here. You have to go up the hill, and it's really dangerous almost to go across to the cottage. Literally, the gate is right here, and I, when I leave my subdivision, I have to, like, hurry up and race, because you literally can't see above that hill, and that hill's going to be there, and the gate is going to be there. It's like disaster waiting to happen. You're going to have people going into Soleil right here, and all the golfers, they do have an extra exit for the golfers, but that does not go across. You know what I mean? They have to go this way and then go around to get out onto Waleska.
Yes.
So all the golfers are constantly coming out there. You're going to have Soleil traffic, you're going to have the golfers, and then you're going to have people racing up the hill. It's just, I mean, it's really going to be a bad thing. And that's all. I mean, it's just a disaster. And when we were at the meeting, I did ask the one gentleman that was talking about it, and I said, if plan, if this doesn't work, if you don't get approved for the, this gate proposal, what is Plan B? And he said, we do not have one. I mean, they haven't even thought that this might not be approved, so please don't approve it.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
Can I ask a question, please, ma'am?
Sure.
Is the, can I ask a question of you, please? Is there room at that location to move the golf path?
They want to take a, I don't know, I wish there was a picture, I wish I would have brought a picture.
Would that, would that make it easier if the golf path was out of the way?
I don't know. Jude, have you ever seen this? You need to stick in the microphone, please. They could move it way, way back if they wanted.
The reason I mention that is so much easier to move a golf path and less cost.
Move a what back?
Golf, the golf trail, for the golfers to cross over.
Yeah, but I still think you're going to have, they're still going to come out, that's the pool entrance, too, there, to the cottage, the pool, and all the, and the restaurant, they all come out there. From the restaurant, the golfers, the pool, you know, they all exit that way, because that's...
Well, I'm just trying to think.
I don't think it's, it's not the golf path, path, that's in the way, it's, it's the fact that when you come out of the golf...
Of the club.
Club there, parking lot.
Okay.
Normally, you would take a right and go around.
Yes.
And then you've got to shoot across that one lane that's one way, over to the other one, to take a left if you're going out.
Yeah, and you literally come out, and the entrance, the new gate, they want literally right there, here's where the entrance to get out of the golfing, you know, the pool area and everything.
Right.
It literally is, it butts up, right? And you go across that, and you go right into my subdivision.
That'd be a major, major traffic jam.
Oh, it's going to be, it's a huge thing, and the hill is right there, it's like, you know? I mean, it's bad enough going out of my subdivision, crossing that median to get to the pool area, but having that gate there, it's just going to be, I mean, it's going to be, someone's going to get killed. They really are.
I know that, I know you're sharing this with us, and ultimately, this would be our decision, but I think it would be good to share that with our Planning Committee, public hearing, at the public hearing on the fifteenth.
Yeah, I'm going to try, I mean, is it worth it? I mean, they seem adamant, they're, they're just going to, we're going to do it, you know, we don't have a Plan B. It's like, well, I'm going to try to get you one, but, but, okay, well, thank you.
Thank, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Stephen Winter?
Till the agenda, okay, yeah, we have that item on the agenda, I think, there. Under Old Business, we have the update on the city goals, master plan for downtown and the entire city, Council Members McGrew and Grant.
Yes, we made progress, and excited to report that the committee met, Councilwoman McGrew, myself, and Ken Patton and Matthew Thomas met this last week, reviewed proposals from six different planning firms to conduct the plan. We are doing follow-up meetings and question-and-answer sessions with two firms next Wednesday. After that, we will decide the next steps to take, whether to interview additional firms or select one of those firms. I think the goal is to present a contract to the council for approval to begin, and hire the, the planning firm to begin the process in July, and we have, I think, to July of 2016 to complete the plan process, so it's moving forward quickly, and we're excited about it, so.
Okay. Thank you. Economic Development, Councilmen Goodwin and Huffman. Huffman, do you have anything to add to that?
I would say that I would just have to stand on our last, last report for now, except there's, there's some things that are happening that hopefully we will be able to share before much longer for the city. Understand that the, of course, the Jones Building is still very, I understand, very close to closing. Hopefully, that will happen soon. So I don't know if you have anything else?
I guess I have a question at this point, because the gentleman addressed us at our last meeting on the Mellow Mushroom.
Yes.
Did we ever get to a point where we might be able partially satisfy?
They, what is, what has happened on that one is that they have, are making an effort to get those easements, and if they are turned down, then they will be back to us. It was like, they probably got another few days. I think they sent some requests out for easements from property owners off and gave, like, ten days, so they've probably another four, five days, and then we'll know what that...
But the major, the major one was that first property that was holding back.
Yes.
And I was wondering, Mr. Patton, do you know if, if, if that organization has been amenable to allowing us to have access to that, or do we have to take other steps to get that?
Councilman Huffman, it's my understanding they're having discussions, but our office hasn't heard anything in regards to whether that property owner is amenable to an easement or not.
Do you think we are prepared to take the next step if they're not?
I don't know about you. I am.
I am, too.
The thing about it is, we need to give them just a few more days to bring an answer back to us regarding what the response was or lack of response.
Well, do you think that, I don't know if there's been any more communication with Mellow Mushroom, is, I know they seem to think they had a somewhat of a soft deadline, but one that was coming up pretty quick.
I gathered from the property owner that the ten days wasn't going to make that much difference.
Okay.
But, you know, who knows?
For the audience, they were talking about possibly employing as many as, I couldn't believe, it's a nice pizza place, but fifty employees? That, that's a lot of pizza.
That is. Sure. Okay.
Lot of jobs.
All right. Improved Management of Parks and Recreation, Mr. Huffman?
Thank, thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Well, I have met with our new Parks Director, Tom Gilliam. If you haven't met him, I'd encourage anybody to come by and introduce yourself to him, and if you have some, some thoughts and ideas about what you'd like to see in the parks, he's most interested in hearing that. he's most interested in hearing that. So, any comments would be appreciated. But, in our short discussion, uh, he's already garnered quite a bit of interest, particular in, uh, use of the fields for, for athletics, being soccer and football and lacrosse primarily, those three sports. And the, what was kinda surprising was, uh, there was a lacrosse, uh, group that came in that he had some experience with before in Milton. And they saw Heritage Park. And they said, that's the place. Heritage Park. He said, look at all that geography down there. The land, he said, we could put a tournament in there and with all the tents up like we did for the barbecue, the picnic. He said, that would bring enormous number of people into this community. Now, it's not gonna pay necessarily for all that, but right now, we're getting zero revenue from that park. And, uh, the plans that were brought to us was gonna cost somewhere in the neighborhood of, uh, a little over a million dollars. Basically, was adding a few more trails and planting trees. And I see, uh, and he does too, that if we level that park out a little bit, and they don't have to be nets up to play, uh, offenses, excuse me, to play soccer or lacrosse or, or football, that we could turn that park into a, a real revenue producer. Again, I'm not trying to sell it as a, uh, something that's gonna pay for itself in total because it won't. But it will bring, uh, additional people into this city on a somewhat regular basis. So he's got some good ideas about what we, what we need to do, and he's gonna need some, uh... Uh, with the new park, we're gonna need a few things that he's making a list of, so we can put in the next year's budget.
Okay, good.
Thank you.
The next, uh, city goal, debt reduction, uh, Acting City Manager Ingram?
Yes, Mayor and Council, the Finance Department is currently working on a comprehensive financial policy that has many parts to it, one of which will be debt, uh, debt management. We, i- it's a very involved process and we look forward to having, uh, maybe a rough draft by the end of the year.
Okay, thank you.
And also, we are continuing to pay our debt.
Great. Item B, uh, Discussion of Wooded Mountain Trail Stormwater Control, Mr. Ingram and Mr. Hattabian?
Yes, if I can have Mr. Hattabian, the City Utility Engineer, to come up and, uh, answer any questions the council may have with the, with this project.
Like I talked about last week, we have two proposals in hand. Okay, is this better?
Next question, please.
Okay. And, uh, we have a proposal to do a study. And during the preparation of the study, we feel as though we have a pretty good handle on the direction to move forward with the detailed design. So we have a, a second proposal to do, do the design. And it's an either or, what you guys wanna do. Either way, you're gonna have to do the design. Question is whether you wanna do the, do the study as well. Staff recommendation is to move forward with the design, but, uh, we'll do what you want.
Okay. Anyone have any questions regarding that? Ms. McGrew?
Will you be looking at the other streets in Great Sky as well? There are four with issues.
Not under this, this plan, but I'm, I'm sure we can.
Thank you.
Anyone else?
Yes, please. Excuse me. Pardon me. In talking with Dave on a, a one-to-one basis, I think, Dave, correct me if I'm wrong, that we kinda felt like if we pay for a design, it's gonna probably pretty much show of what Dave and our engineers can come up with. And this is not a real complicated issue, and I don't really feel that the city needs to spend the money for a, uh, an additional study to be made. If we can make those for people on Wooded Mountain Trail just happier, I think we have accomplished a heck of a lot, and I, and I think, uh, their expertise, along with the people who will be doing the work, we'll probably be able to do that very sufficiently and to the satisfaction of the people on Wooded Mountain Trail without having to conduct a study.
Okay, anyone else?
Mayor, if, if I may, have, have you heard from any of the, uh, local homeowners there, Wooded Mountain Trail, if, if they...
Yeah, they, they wanna move forward with the design.
Okay. Thank you. The next item, item, uh, C, Discussion of LED Lighting Ordinance Amendment. You have that in your agenda package there as, uh, eight C. Does anyone have any question about that? What, what that does is, is, uh, uh, it, it allows the, uh, those who have the lights in place now to keep them, so this ordinance is not retroactive. Yet, uh, it does, uh, say that the lights have to be removed once the business license holder, uh, changes. Now, I, I don't, I think that's correct, is it? Bobby, is that what it, pretty much what it said?
Yes.
The, the only concern that I have is how, you know, how do you, how do you enforce that? Maybe it doesn't matter if you only got three or four anyway, but how do you enforce that if it's on the building and the, and the build, building owner puts it on there? He doesn't get a license necessarily if he leases that building, so there won't be, uh, I mean, there can be a change of licensees and, and, uh, you know, they have no control over what's on that building. I mean, I guess that's the only question I would have.
And, and, and those are just two different options. You could do it, you can say the lights belong to the business, or you can say the lights belong to the building. This is drafted as if the business is the one utilizing the lights, and therefore, that would be the trigger of changing them. You could say, well, no, it's the ownership of the building. Either way works. This would be faster, I think.
So you're saying if it's a, a ownership of the bi, of the building, then it could be there forever almost? I mean...
Correct, if the ownership, if the building ownership didn't change, if you tied it to the building. So it's just up to the council how you wanna trigger it.
Okay.
This was just one option.
Do you have some?
Could we add, uh, or the ownership of the building changes, I mean, to that?
We could. I, I'd have to think through that. It, I think it's really a concept, and I guess I would just view them, the lights as benefiting the business as opposed to the building, but it, if you wanted to say either one triggered it, that would be fine. Then you get into the ownership, but the business hasn't changed, and is that fair?
Right.
So. Any way you do it, it's gonna be, there's gonna be an element of unfairness to it because you're taking away something that's already there at some point. Another option would be to say they just stay there a certain number of years, and then they gotta come down, but that's a nightmare to keep in track of. You could also just say they're legally non-conforming and they fall under other rules that we have in existence anyway, without having to specify anything, so. There are different ways to do it. I, this was what I understood from the discussion. I sort of heard, this is what the council was talking about, is when businesses changed.
It could, uh, but the simplest way would probably be just to have them as legal non-conforming, don't you think?
There are already rules in place for that, so.
Okay. John, Mr. Rust?
You know, I don't think we talked about this, but I like the way the wording is, uh, actually, we're prohibiting interior lights that outline the window, that are visible from the exterior of the building. So if someone, we talk mostly about exterior lights, but someone could go around us if we just said exterior and put them inside, but clearly visible from the outside and yet outlining the window. And I think the way this is worded is pretty good because it will cover that. So, I, 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 I don't think we talked about that, Bobby, but I like the way that's worded, so I, I would agree with that. Thank you.
Okay. Mr. Huffman, you have something? Okay, okay.
Excuse me.
You have one? Ms. McGrew, okay?
I think it would be best to keep it with the business owner because that is the person who paid most likely to put the lights on the windows. If we tag it onto the building owner, I think it would penalize the business who's renting, who has paid for the lights. That said, we're only ever going to have four businesses with these lights, and I think they'll be pretty easy to keep track of.
I'd be surprised if we can keep track of those.
Oh, come on, we can do it.
Mr. Rust?
Sandy, I think there's one of the four is on an exterior of a building, and it's not approved by the building owner. But the lessee put it on there and he can't stop it. So certainly, when that comes off and the lessee's gone, I'm sure that building owner is gonna wanna have, have that off in the new lease, so you'll cover that base. Thank you.
Okay. All right. Anything else on that?
Mr. Mayor, just, there's a blank in there. That blank is intended to be the date of the effectiveness of the previous ordinance. When I drafted this, I didn't have that in front of me.
Oh, okay. All right. We have an update on the Northwest Canton Fire Station progress, Chief Floyd?
Good evening, Mayor and Council. We had a meeting with the architect that we've hired for the design of the station. Basically, what we done is we took a prototype that they're working on for another jurisdiction. We moved a few things, uh, added a few things, and it looks like they're gonna have the plans ready with, in probably next three weeks, we'll have a prototype building that we'll be able to sit down and start looking at and start fine tuning it at that point. Once we have that, we're gonna get with the County Fire Department, I'll get Chief Prather in here. We'll sit down and start going, what does he like, what does he not like, and getting everything together. I think that once, since we're using their plans, I believe the, I believe it's gonna go real smooth. Uh, the things that we changed are the items that I brought up to y'all in the committee meeting. Uh, and I have not had the opportunity to meet with Chief Prather yet, but I hope to do so sometime next week.
Are they, are they still looking at same square footage as previously, or are they looking at the, uh, size that the county had?
Well, it definitely won't be the size of the counties. They're not sure if they're gonna be able to maintain the fifty-five hundred. Uh, they're gonna try with some of the changes that we made in moving some of the equipment to the other side of the bay.
Okay.
That's gonna help reduce the square footage, uh, the overall square footage, but actually is gonna add living square footage inside the living quarters.
Okay, good. Anyone else have a question? Chief, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Appreciate that. Okay, item E, update on the status of River Green Sewer Tap Agreement and Called Bonds. Acting City Manager?
Yes, thank you, Mayor and Council. In February two thousand fifteen, the City of Canton requested that Chatham Whelan substantiate with a signed agreement and documentation of the cost of off-site sewer improvements, the validity of letters that were being offered to the city as evidence of sewer tap credits. As a result of no documentation to support the existence of a valid agreement, in March of two thousand fifteen, letters were issued to the known developers within the River Green area that the city would no longer honor the letters of credit. We're currently awaiting the original declarant or its successor to come forward with a request to documentation. I've asked Mr. Dyer to speak to the, uh, bonds.
We have, uh, made claim on the bonds, provided additional information, but we have not received a check yet. At some point, we're probably gonna have to meet and decide whether to file suit.
Okay. Anyone else on that issue? Okay, on a new business, uh, Discussion of the Request from Prominence Court Homeowners Association that their streets be accepted by the city as public streets to be maintained by the city. Mr. Ingram?
Yes, if I can have Mr. Patton come up and speak to the, this issue?
Thank you, Mr. Ingram, Mayor, Councilmembers. Uh, the Prominence Point Homeowners Association has submitted application and request that the streets within their subdivision, which are private streets with recorded plates that reflect private streets, city council consider, uh, taking those as city maintenance streets. City staff, uh, did go out, perform inspections. There are some, uh, recommended improvements that, uh, are requested should be made prior to city council accepting those streets if they're so inclined to do so, such as crosswalks should be made ADA accessible before acceptance. Street signs need to be replaced to reflect that those would become, uh, city maintained streets. And there are some, uh, areas, uh, within the report with photographs, uh, that, uh, need some, uh, roadwork and some, uh, deep patching, uh, areas done, some, uh, curbing, uh, broken. The pool fence for their amenity center encroaches within the right-of-way. It's recommended that, uh, that should be, uh, removed out of the right-of-way.
Okay.
I think there might be a attorney or someone with the Homeowners Association, uh, that is, uh, here as well. If you wish to, uh, hear from them, uh, ask them any questions.
Okay, let's, uh, Mr. Rust, go ahead.
Ken, did they ever cite a reason why they wanted to be, come into the city? I mean, uh, what's the purpose of them doing this? They, they started, oh, it's a private street, it was always intended to be private streets, and all of a sudden, seems like there's gonna be a flood of people doing this to us or for us, whatever you wanna look at it. Why?
City council adopted a policy that you would consider, uh, accepting, uh, private streets in their partaking of, uh, that policy and application.
Well, it's, uh, it's cost of maintenance.
But do they have a reserve account and how much is in the reserve account? Are they willing to turn that reserve account for streets over to us if we take it over? Similar, similar to what, uh, Pinnacle Place did in River Green?
I'm not sure that there is a reserve account or a set aside within the HOA do specifically for street maintenance. That would be a question, uh, for the Homeowners Association or their authorized agent, who, who is here that could answer those questions.
I think it's a valid question. I mean, uh, I can't, those streets are about eleven, ten or eleven years old, I believe. That's what I understand.
Mr. Mayor, I think some of those streets might be a little bit older than that.
Oh.
The whole prominence development probably got started somewhere around nineteen ninety-eight, nineteen ninety-nine. I think the majority of these streets in Prominence Court was in the two thousand, two thousand four timeframe.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, I'm Stephen Winter, and I'm here on behalf of, uh, Prominence Court. And I've got James Major, one of the board members, who is here as well. The, uh, the development was, really started selling in two thousand and four. You know, and we kind of inherited the development as homeowners, um, in the condition that the developer left it. And it had its share of financial problems, and we inherited those problems. Some of the, you know, infrastructure work, um, you know, was not done to standard, the maintenance of it wasn't quite done to standard. When the community turned over, um, when the developer left and the homeowners themselves took over, um, we were really left empty-handed. And as you know, we pay the same tax dollars as homes that are in a community with public streets. Then we weren't getting any benefit of at least some of those tax dollars to help us with the roads. So the community acted responsibly. They started, um, a reserve, um, budget that included reserves, not just for the roads, but also for the water lines, cause it's a private water system. There's a single meter coming in, so we own and have to maintain those water lines inside the, the community, as well as the pool and the clubhouse, the fence and, and other items. So there is reserve money, there's about ninety-six thousand dollars, um, in reserve money. It's not earmarked specifically for streets. You know, it's earmarked for all those capital items that I just, um, laid out. They've done a respectable job maintaining what they could. I think the question was asked, why do they wanna turn it over? Um, and I think the answer is, they wanna be like every, or like the vast majority of other communities, um, in the city. They want, you know, the city benefits that they pay their tax dollars for. That would include maintenance of the streets and the, you know, police force, um, you know, helping them with, you know, enforcement within those streets. They're just not equipped to do it. They've done a good job as best as they can. But you have much more knowledge behind you and your city folks than they do. They also, you know, really are financially strapped. They feel like you would have better buying power and ability to help them, you know, kinda help themselves and have the streets improved. And improved streets improves the community, improves values of homes, and that generates even a greater tax revenue base for, for the city. So they're looking at it as sort of a win-win.
Okay. Mr. Rust?
Question, you mentioned something that's kinda critical. You have a private water system in there, so that means if we take over the streets and you have a private water problem, we're gonna have to rip up our streets to get at your property, your sewer lines. That is a big difference from many other s- city streets that we're being asked to take over, the private streets. many other city streets that we're being asked to take over, or private streets that we're being asked to take over by the city. So how would we address that?
You know, there's two things. Number one is, you know, there's a single meter at the front of the section of Prominence Court that is private. And the association pays that water bill, and the homeowners that live in that area pay the association a proportionate share of that water bill as a part of their common expenses. You know, they pay for other things as well with their assessment dollars, but water is one of them. That either stays in place, and the association would continue to maintain those water lines, where we'd be happy to let the city take over the maintenance of those water lines. You know, the association could continue to pay the bill, but I think the most logical thought might be for the city to take over those water lines, because you're right, by and large, they run under the streets.
Is there an upcharge on your water bill for the fact that you are in fact a private water company? I mean, you, you just divide out the water based on, how do you, how do you do that? If there's only one meter, that's kinda a strength.
Well, there's one bill. In other words, the association-
How do you split it out? How do you split it out?
So the budget every year, you know, contains the water estimate for usage in the private section.
Is this for individual homeowners or all lumped together?
Yeah. I, I could probably explain it a little bit better, 'cause unfortunately I've been subject to it for quite a while now. What happened was additionally, oh, sorry, my name's James Major, I'm with the HOA. The water system in the, in the community originally was a single master meter. The HOA paid the entire bill. The cost of water was included in the HOA fees. I don't remember exactly when, it's been several years now back, about five, four, five, five, maybe six years. We actually, it put in water meters at each home, and now we have a company that reads those meters, and we bill the homeowners based on what their meter reading is, based on the cost of water to the association.
But it's your private read. I mean, we don't, we don't read those meters, you do.
We have a company that reads them.
Yeah, but, but it's an HOA read. I mean, it's not-
Yes. At this time, because the city, the county water authority said that they, they, the, they were only responsible to the master meter that goes into the community, 'cause my understanding is that community was originally developed as a retirement community, and that's why a lot of the issues are, that are there are there. And then that fell through, something happened with it, and then it became a single-family home community.
So, how many, how many residents and how many miles of streets?
There's two hundred, there's two hundred and eighty-eight homes that are on the private section.
And they're all individual, single-family homes?
All individual, single-family homes. There's a hundred homes that are on the public street portion of the community.
Oh, you have some public streets?
We have some public streets.
Okay.
I don't know the exact road, you know, miles or linear feet of roads in both. I don't know if the, the city does, but it's, we just never had the reason to measure. But the water system can, the operation of it, the way it's read and built, can remain the same.
You, you buy your water directly from the county, not from us, not from the city?
I, I believe the meter is from the county, yes.
Okay.
But I mean, we, we would, I think the most logical solution would be to leave, you know, that, we would love for the city to take over the billing and the reading component to it, but if that's, you know, an issue, then the association could continue to function with the water on the private side as it has.
Have you presented something to us that covers all these bases, I mean, your law firm?
We have not, but we certainly can supplement the application.
What do you want from us? You want us to come back and say we might consider it, and then you'll come back and tell us what it's gonna cost?
If water is a real issue, then we should-
No, I, no, no, no. It's, there's more than one issue, but that's just, I was just trying to find out some of the facts relative to that sewer system or private water system that you've got. Sewer or city, sewer, I guess, right?
I believe so. I know on our water, on our, on our trash bills, we get a fee for stormwater.
Yeah, okay.
We're not really sure what, what it goes to, because we have, the association's responsible for the stormwater system in the, in the community as is.
Ken, do you have, you wanna say something there?
Mr. Mayor and Councilmembers, it's my understanding that Prominence Point is served water and sanitary sewer through Cherokee Water and Sewer Authority.
Thank you.
And, and we bill for garbage and stormwater?
I would assume so, yes, sir.
Mr. Mayor, there's two, there's an awful lot to consider here. This has got to be studied further.
It's not, it's not just simple. Thank, thank you very much.
This is not simple at all.
Thank you.
Anyone else have any questions of these gentlemen here? We, we may have to have like a committee, or we may have to have a special meeting to really hash this whole thing out here, see where we are, but we'll, we'll decide that in the next few days. Ken, yeah?
Mr. Mayor and Councilmembers, pursuant to requests that our office emailed to the Homeowners Association this morning, they did email back this afternoon a copy of a financial statement. I've not had a chance to go through it in detail. I think you were copied on that financial statement as well as the interim city manager and CFO. I did make copies of that available. There are some items in that that I noticed that does address stormwater signage and a few things of that nature that we probably need to look at prior to city council making any formal decision one way or the other.
Sure. Anyone else? Okay?
Thank you very much.
Okay. Item B, discussion of planning commission recommendation, case Z, CA fifteen oh four dash zero zero one, Summer Walk subdivision to amend condition six to allow for additional front entry garage style homes. Mr. Ingram?
Mr. Patton?
Mr. Patton, you had on that one, okay.
Yes, sir, Mr. Mayor and Councilmembers. There was an application to amend the condition zoning approval relative to Summer Walk subdivision. The Canton Planning Commission did conduct a public hearing on the matter May eighteenth, two thousand fifteen. Planning Commission did recommend approval of the proposed amendment with the following condition, that there be a total of one hundred seventy-five front entry garage type homes and ninety-five side entry type garage homes.
Is this, this, is this the first time this has come up, or is this the second time?
No, sir. This is the second time that this request has come before city council.
And, and what, what was the result of the first one?
The result of the first was to do away with the rear entry garages in which those, for the most part, were carried and split between front entry and side entry. There is a street that has some topographic slope issues that has caused them to come back and request additional front entry garages to be able to accommodate additional lots.
Okay, anyone have a question? Mr. Rust?
Hey, Ken, wasn't this the property that had the gas meters that came out and blocked the entry into the garages?
Yes, sir. On that, that one homeowner raised that question and issue.
This was, so this goes back a year. I mean, it's been a long time, right?
Yes, sir. Well over a year ago, when that last amendment was approved by city council.
But the planning commission is saying to go ahead with it, to do it, approve it?
They've recommended a hundred and seventy-five front entry and I think ninety-five side entry.
There's no good reason not to approve it then, right, or is there?
Well, it may be. I do understand the area that, that's marked on our handout here, that is on a fairly steep slope, and probably is best served with front, front entry. But are they extending the number? They've asked for a fairly large number of front entries, and that number would exceed what they got designated on that hill. Now, are they just trying to get more front entries because it's?
There, if I'm not mistaken, Councilman Huffman, there's a twenty-something lots on that street that are affected in this increase from the previous approval for the front entry increases by twenty-one or twenty-two front entry to accommodate those lots.
So that's the only difference, is the twenty, twenty-one front entry?
Twenty-two, yes, sir.
Twenty-two. And so that's all it would be affected with this, what they're asking for now?
Yes.
If this is not approved, what does that mean? They can't, they can't build on those twenty-two lots?
No, sir. Just gonna cost them a lot more to build, because they'll have to do some subwalls and some other things to be able to get some side entry garages.
So it's not that they can't use them, it's just that it costs more to do it?
Correct.
I would think that the homes built there, if they tried to build some walls to support rear entry, I would say in the not distant future that they would probably end, end up having some difficulties with those walls. It's, it's, it's pretty steep hill.
Ken, isn't it true that one of the reasons is it wouldn't look very good?
Yes.
If there's twenty-two homes, really wouldn't look very good.
No, sir.
Yeah, thank you.
Okay. Anyone else? All right.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and Councilmembers.
Item C, update on the city sanitation roll-off. Councilman Rust and City Manager Ingram.
Mayor and Council, at the last meeting, y'all had asked us to put together a, an update and a summary on the roll-off of sanitation services that the city provides. The finance department has compiled a memo along with some facts, some rates, comparison of surrounding areas in your packets. If you have any questions after the reviewing, I'll be more than happy to answer what I can or get the answers for you at a subsequent time.
Yeah, I, I've got a, what's that? It came by an email, yeah. I, I got a, I got a question. Based on the information that you sent there, and if you extend that out on an annual basis, as, as you indicate there, we, we've got about just under twenty-one thousand dollars in revenues, and, well, will have on an annual basis, and just over sixty-one thousand in expenditures, which means a net loss of a little better than forty thousand dollars on that. And yet, when you, when you look down, it says in comparison with other public and private sanitation collection sites within a thirty-mile radius, our rates are equivalent, or somewhat lower, a little lower. If our rates are equivalent, and we are, our, our expenses are three times our revenue, that tells me that our expenses are too high, and I'm kinda figuring out where we're going wrong, 'cause these private people, private organizations are, if, if they're, if they're using about the same rates as we do, they can't possibly have the same expenses that we do.
May I draw your attention to that there's three hundred and eighteen trips? If you do the math, I think that equates to about two times a day it's being used. So we have no economies of scale. We're supporting opening a refuge site Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday, Friday, and Saturday for two or three vehicles per day.
Three hundred and eighteen trips in six months?
In six months, yes, sir. So there, there, with all due respect, there probably, there's a lot of waste.
So, but regardless of the trips, how often are they picking up those containers? I think they're picking them up when they're not even half full, aren't they?
That's, I can get that answer for you, but I do not know.
It would seem to me that they don't need to pick them up as often as they must be picking them up.
Yeah, I would, I would assume that they're picking up at least, at least weekly.
Okay. Anyone else have a question, comment?
I don't have a question, I just have some comment. Is that, that is a service that the city should provide. We do need to find out about the expense situation, 'cause that's a valid point. And, Mr. Ingram, if they're picking up once a week, that might be a way to cut down on some of the expense, but we got to have a place for the citizens to put their trash. And at one time, we were cutting it back, and we might've just lost. Many people might've thought it just closed. And then how much, I think it was designated, how much the city itself uses that?
Yes, sir.
How mu, that was a fair amount, wasn't it?
Looking at just the, glancing down the percentages, it's probably twenty-five percent.
Yeah, that's what I was thinking, too. So where would that twenty-five, where would that go if we were to shut this thing down?
We would still have that expense.
Pardon?
We would still have that expense.
Where would they take, I'm, my concern is where the trash goes.
Oh, the trash, I'm sure would go the same place it's going now. We would still have to maintain dumpsters there and that, that are collected from waste management once a week or however often's required.
So it'd be just used, just for the sole use of the, the city itself?
Probably, if, if we shut the site down, yes, sir, obviously.
I, I think there would be one big difference if we went to the city only. We wouldn't have to maintain it. We wouldn't have to have a person there.
Right. And if you look at the expenses, I mean, that is a significant part of the overall expenses, is personnel cost.
I think the big thing that concerns me is how much of this is from outside the city, and if we eliminated that, what would that happen, or charged them a fair number instead of an absolute, not by weight or by volume or something. I don't know how you do that, unless they got a scale there. I don't think they do.
But I, I understand it is city only residents now, although I don't know how they verify that.
We look at the licenses, but obviously there's a little room for, room for errors.
I thought there was a non-resident fee that we charge people. If they were non-residents, they pay more. You just can't dump it at all.
That's correct.
I wonder what happens this weekend when we have two dumpsters, one here being here at the city hall, and people come from out of town. Are we gonna verify their license? Camille, she's still here?
They use driver's licenses.
Yeah, she wants me to be there with her. Yeah, maybe, maybe we'll check that out on Saturday, because they could really abuse us if we just open it up.
I, I dare say there's not one of us sitting up here that can name every street in the city. And you know how many, by far, most of the homes are, have a Canton address, don't, aren't in the city. To me, that's, that's probably the, part of the difficult part there.
The tenant-
What'd you say? What I said was, look on the driver's license, unless you know every street in the city, you don't know whether that person is from outside the city or-
Correct.
Or inside the city.
The tenant, though, can very easily have a list of those streets alphabetically in order.
Mr. Patton?
I went, I went a couple weeks ago. He takes your license, he walks in his little shed. I think he's looking at a list.
Mr. Patton knows we could put him out there.
Did you get rejected, Bobby? No. You used it. They let, they let you in.
Well, when you, when you look at this, there's less than, looks roughly less than two vehicles in there a day. Would that seem reasonable? I mean, that doesn't seem hardly worth keeping anybody, keeping open for, does it?
But where are they gonna put those two, those two vehicles that come in there a day? Where are they gonna put that trash now? On the side of the road?
Well, they might, they might not, you know.
Well, let's just say one a day then. It's gonna go on the side of the road.
Do we have a breakdown of type of vehicle?
Yes, sir, we do. We do. On the, if you will look, in the memo, we have placed the number, the number of vehicles as far as small cars and trucks versus the number of trailers and box trucks. We've got that breakdown as well. But if you also look on the collection site, financials, which I believe is on page three of, of that handout, you'll see at the very bottom there, it'll tell you the number of customer vehicles and the number of city vehicles, number of trailers and box trucks.
Okay. Cause it just seems like the, the rate difference between a vehicle and a box truck.
Thirty, thirty, forty, and fifty dollars.
Twenty dollars difference, and it seems like you'd get a lot more trash in a box truck than-
Mr. Mayor?
Mr. Rust?
Hold on a minute, hold on a minute.
Nathan, is there any breakdown about how much of the, what percentage comes on the weekend? It seems to me that like our garbage comes on Wednesdays. People tend to move out on weekends. They tend to create a garbage that they can't do anything with, but throw it away. They can't leave it by the side of their house for three or four days until the Wednesday pickup after they've already moved away. So there's a real need on the weekend for that emergency, I gotta get rid of this stuff, and they can't wait for the garbage day, so it's gotta go somewhere. So the, is there a heavy use on weekends?
That, that's an excellent question, and that's something that I can get for the council, for Mayor and Council. How, how often, what are the proportions? Does it use predominantly on the weekend? I mean, that may help answer, answer some opening, open versus closed questions that we-
From residents, I would imagine most of it's weekend.
You know, unless it's, unless it's food stuff or something like that-
That's not supposed to go in there.
Well, then, you know, if someone cleans out their basement and throws out a bunch of junk, pieces of wood and stuff like that, they can actually put that out at the curb, and garbage people will pick that up.
They will.
And it's a lot cheaper than going over there and paying fifteen, thirty dollars.
Yeah, there's a, a neighbor of mine paid for a dumpster to be placed in the street, and he's putting stuff in it, and I guarantee you, everything he's putting in there, the city would haul away for nothing. He just didn't realize it. I would say this, Mr. Mayor, that in, in one, if we look at what we're trying to do to our city, including what Camille has done for us coming up this weekend, and trying to reduce the trash and the way our city looks, I would be very disappointed to see us do anything that- anything that would hinder these efforts. I would be even willing to give some of the budget that was given to the project of Blight in order to keep that open. So, when we start talking about budgetary situations in the coming weeks, is that I feel that strong that if we try to do this over here and at the same time close down the offer of the city to take care of some trash, I think it's kind of, you know, it just doesn't go hand in hand together. You follow what I'm saying?
Sure.
Thank you.
I just have one closing thought for Camille and maybe for this weekend. Camille, when someone comes in and dumps a bunch of stuff in the dumpster, if we handed them one of those little flyers that said, you know, in the future, you can put that out by your curbside, you don't have to come in for this, it probably, it might really help, because, you know, it's surprising what they'll take to hand out when someone comes in, so they'll know in the future, they don't have to come in for that, they can just put it out by their curbside. You're way ahead of us. Thank you.
She always is.
Okay, anyone else?
Yes, Mayor. I was going to see if the shredding had been rescheduled. I've had several people ask me about that, because they were unable to shred this past weekend. Not yet.
Okay. Anyone else? Okay. Next item. Discussion of the Hotel Motel Tax Budget Amendment Acting, City Manager, Nathan?
Mayor and council, I've included in your packet a budget amendment request to transfer a hun... One thousand dollars from reserves in the Hotel Motel Tax Fund to the Cherokee County Arts Council and asked to cover expenses associated with security during the annual arts festival.
Any comments, any questions? Okay.
Thank you.
Discussion of the street sweeping agreement with Holly Springs. Mr. Ingram?
Thank you. In closing your packets, a rough draft, and let me emphasize rough draft, it's more of a document to elicit this discussion of an intergovernmental agreement with Holly Springs to use the street sweeper, tongue twister, or for them to use our bucket truck. I would like to point out that I have had discussions with the city manager, Mr. Rob Logan, and that we are going to strike the last three items that are on the fee schedule. They involve some recreation, parking recreation use equipment that, quite honestly, I'm not sure how they originally got on that schedule anyway, that neither party has. So, we're going to strike that for consideration. The last three, yes, ma'am.
The last three items?
The last three.
Mr. Ingram and I have discussed this, and at least from some of our calculations here, if we pay the rate that was shown on the chart there for street sweeping, then we would be paying around, based on the average number of hours that we have utilized a street sweeper over the last few months, we'd be paying around seventy-five thousand dollars a year, which would be a pretty good payment on a street sweeper, you know, in reality. So, it seems like that's a pretty heavy price to pay just for that, but...
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, go ahead.
On the street sweeper, I know the previous city manager was trying to get another year or so out of the present street sweeper and had implemented some programs to control or better schedule the sweeper itself in order to extend the life of that sweeper. This would definitely reduce the life of that sweeper. My question would be, would these monies be held in an escrow-type situation so that we can use that to pay for our new sweeper, because I think we're getting close to needing one?
My... I think you may have it backwards.
We're paying the money, not getting it.
We're possibly entering into agreement to use their new street sweeper in lieu of purchasing another street sweeper for the city of Canton or major...
That's not unusual, is it? Well, how long will that extend our life of our present sweeper?
We could take one year's cost and put seventy-five thousand dollars into the sweeper that we've got and maybe, you know, refurbish it if it could be done, or, you know, overhaul parts of it or whatever. I mean, that, just the first year is that much.
When it comes to the bucket truck, are they going to use our bucket truck, or are we going to use theirs?
They were going to use the city of Canton's bucket truck. And once again, if I may reiterate, this is just to elicit some discussion. I think that number of seventy-four dollars per hour, I think is certainly up for discussion. That number was drawn off of some FEMA schedules, and we'll discuss that and see if we obviously can't get that lower, because as the mayor mentioned, at twenty hours a week for fifty-two weeks, you're looking at a thousand hours or seventy-four, roughly seventy-five thousand dollars, and that's almost prohibitive in my opinion.
Anyone else? Mr. Rust?
In the past, I know we've seen proposals before the council regarding how to save the life of our street sweeper, whereas we had like scout trucks go out and kind of determine where the sweeping was needed, as opposed to spending the high cost per hour for the sweeper to go out there and sweep streets that didn't necessarily need it. Would that still be incorporated into this program?
Well, one of the ideas is that we'll maintain our street sweeper for last-minute items, sometimes when the street sweeper is not available for the city of Canton use, that we can utilize ours. I don't believe it was ever the original intention of us getting rid of the city of Canton's street sweeper for us to use. Also, in the agreement, it talks about a schedule. I have spoken with Mr. Logan, that that schedule can be arbitrary. It doesn't have to be a set schedule, that we're going to do this on this day, you know, every week, that it can be as needed, if we needed five hours, ten hours, or we had some streets that required more attention versus some other streets that didn't, so...
Nathan, how does this fee schedule compare with our current costs? How does it compare to what we're currently costing out for these line items?
Well, again, I think the fee schedule is exorbitant right now.
You think it's too high?
Yes, it's on the paper. I think that would have to be negotiated, sir, to even make it close to reasonable.
Thank you. They got a new street sweeper? Is that the idea here?
I believe they do. I'm not sure what...
I think a new one costs three hundred thousand, and we were going into the stormwater fund to pay for that, I believe. Stormwater was going to pay for our street sweeper, I thought.
There is some consideration given to purchase of a new street sweeper, yes, sir.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay. All right, next item. Discussion of compensation for the planning commission and variance board of appeals member, Councilman Grant.
Yes, you have in your package copies of the ordinance from two thousand and eight. It specifies compensation, stopping for the planning commission members and the variance board are thirty-five dollars per meeting. And when we redid the unified code in two thousand and fifteen, we just changed that to a per diem as determined by the city council. I was just wanting, in the next meeting, I was going to make a motion that we raise that per diem from thirty-five dollars to fifty dollars for these members. I think we're having more cases, they're becoming more complex. I know these members spend a lot of their personal times going out and exploring these cases. I think it's a slight increase, but I think it is well worth it, and so I was just going to make a motion in the next meeting for your consideration.
I think we can afford the fifteen dollars.
Fifteen dollars.
Is that now, is that an ordinance? Do we have to amend ordinance?
No, you would not, because it's no longer an ordinance, because unified code now that we adopted in two thousand and fifteen, it just says a per diem, so it doesn't state amount. It says a per diem is determined by council.
Okay. Just by resolution, I guess we could do that.
Yes.
Okay.
So, is that going to be on the agenda for a vote?
Yes. To it. Put it down on agenda.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Yes.
Mr. Hoffman?
This is not necessarily on the compensation for the members of those committees, but while we're discussing it, I do want to bring up something that on these committees, I think we need to look at the membership of these committees as going, much like the wards for our city council people, that we should have designation from every ward on these various committees. I feel like the committees get a little bit overloaded in certain areas, and it's not representative of the city in total, because the majority of the city now lives in four or five residential areas, and I think they need to be represented on these different boards. They may be to some degree, but I'd, just using my thought processes, that it probably could stand some adjustment or looking into how to best do it. I know it'd complicate things, being that the terms are, you know, council, everybody has a four-year term, and they just rotate as when they come up for election. And these are one-year, two-year, and three-year terms, which would make it a little bit more difficult to come up with that, but I'm sure this one would not be the first organization to have to figure that out. But I would like to put that on the agenda for Ms. Stanton, for as new business next time is to discuss the membership requirement.
It would probably take, depending on what it was, that would probably take a charter change.
Yes, it might.
Okay, anyone else? Okay. Okay, discussion of public safety concerns at Cherokee North Apartments access, Councilman Grant?
Yes, I was speaking to a couple constituents at Cherokee North Apartments, had concerns about when they exit apartments, because of the parking spaces there and the curve on North Street, it's extremely dangerous exiting those apartments. You actually have to pull out into the road to see if there's oncoming traffic, which there usually is, and it's moving very quickly. Actually, and this morning, Ms. Ingram, the mayor, and Mr. Pogue, our public works director, went and explored the situation ourselves and did confirm, indeed, it is a public safety hazard. So, we were looking at a couple solutions, as possibility of putting a reflective mirror there, which there's not really a good place to put it. We discussed this morning, the possibility of removing the first three parking spaces from immediately to the left of the exit there, and actually relocating them to the end of the spaces on the other side of North Street, so we're not losing parking spaces. So, that would give us more access. And looking at the situation after we move that, to see if that helps, we're anticipating that that will help some. And also, after those first three spaces relocated, making the first three or four spaces after that for compact cars only. So, we think that's going to help a lot, and then we'll assess the situation after that to see if we still need a reflective mirror in addition. But it is a very dangerous situation, and I think we're going to be moving forward with that quickly. Mr. Ingram?
And may I add to that? I've since, I've spoken with Mr. Pogue, he's went out and reviewed the situation as far as moving some of those parking spaces down. I think we are going to be able to move those down and not lose any parking spaces, maybe just one. We're trying not to lose any parking spaces at all.
Anyone else? Mr. Rust?
Yeah. Bill, was there any consideration to maybe a motion activated flashing yellow light, that when they access, go to access the street, that the light would come on, traffic entering the street, whatever? That there would be, only would flash when someone is trying to get into the street?
I don't think any consideration has been given to that yet, and I don't know if that would be cost prohibitive or how that would work.
I'm just thinking, because your options here are pretty limited, honestly, I mean, and some of them aren't very good. Taking away parking places is never very good, but I know exactly what you're talking about.
Right, right.
You want to protect people, number one, so that might be a thought.
Hopefully, we won't losing parking spaces and perhaps one at the most, so...
I don't know, it just seems like flashing yellow light would get people's attention. It wouldn't come on very often, it would only when... It's kind of like when you enter a school zone when kids are present, same thing. It's only going to happen when somebody's trying to get into the street.
And if I may add also, doing away with that one space right downstream of the exit and entrance, if we do away with that one space and we can make it somewhat like a turn lane, that would allow people coming out of the apartments to look and be able to look out of their mirror. And not only that, but removing that parking space also helps the pedestrian crosswalk right there, makes it safer for pedestrians, so in my opinion, that may be a win-win.
Whatever works best. Thank you.
I believe we also discussed adding a sign up on North Street at the curb, a blind drive-ahead, which I think would be a good idea as well, just hopefully slows some people down there.
Anyone else? Okay. Discussion of Happy Trails Settlement Agreement. What this involves is some previous discussion of litigation that we wanted to, that the council has agreed to settle the case and reach an agreement with the property owner. Now, this is a piece of property, I guess Happy Trails is the name. I think of Roy Rogers every time I read that word. But Brian Roach and Lee Lusk, I believe, are the owners of this piece of property. It had a burned-out house on it, up one forty on the right, not too far from Black Walgreens up there. And they came into the city and asked for a variance, for a monument sign out front. We could not, our code section did not allow the signed sign that they wanted, so they were turned down initially, and I don't know if they actually, Bobby, did they actually file suit, or...
They did.
Okay, so essentially, it got into the court system or was about to go into it. And the council has agreed to allow an eighty-foot, eighty-square-foot sign. That would be applicable only to that Happy Trails owner. If and when the property is sold or anything, that variance would go away. And that eighty-foot, square-foot variance would be effective within fifteen days after the removal of that burned-out house. So, we're going to at least get that cleaned up, looks like. Anyone else have a comment or can explain that better than I?
You know, I do.
Yes, sir.
One is that I would like to see them take action immediately on that yellow house. They've been dragging their feet way too long.
The agreement requires them to act within sixty days.
Sixty days, thank you. And Bobby, does that mean that on the, is it an eighty-foot variance, or is it an eighty-foot square foot?
Eighty-square-foot sign.
Here, I'm reading a hundred and twenty...
A hundred and twenty is what they asked for originally.
Okay.
And actually, thirty, thirty-two is what our ordinance, I believe, would have permitted in that type of corridor. Is that correct?
Right, the hundred and twenty is, our ordinance actually allows a hundred and twenty in general commercial districts. There are not many places where that would actually apply, but that's where the hundred and twenty is.
So, are they good with this?
They're only getting eighty. What?
Are they good with this agreement?
They've signed it.
Oh, okay.
So, this is all the terms that we discussed in the executive session.
So, at our next meeting, we will vote to either approve or disapprove that agreement? Anyone else?
Bobby, we pretty much already approved it, we just had to vote. I mean, that's why we did this. Yeah, okay, thank you.
Next item, discussion of West Marietta Stormwater and Right-of-Way Improvements. Mr. Ingram?
Mayor and council, in your agenda packets is an item for consideration to approve an award to GDP contractors for some improvements here on, right close to us on West Marietta Road. This project is, for the most part, stormwater in nature. It needs to be done very quickly for us to continue our Lamig project of repaving West Marietta, resurfacing that street. Mr. McClure is prepared to answer any questions that council may have that's specific to this... specific to this project, if y'all have any.
The only question I have, is this a part of our existing drainage system, stormwater system?
Mr. Mayor and Council, yes, it is.
It is?
It's part of our existing infrastructure.
Okay, so we're taking something out and putting something in, other than streets and sidewalks?
Correct.
Okay. What are we taking out?
There is an existing storm infrastructure pipe that conveys up along the right-of-way and... A magnetic. Come closer. Probably my type magnet, sorry. The existing infrastructure that's there is basically, let me start from this, that way I'll be brief on this for how it was determined. The LMEG project, resurfacing of street projects, I went through and made determination of existing infrastructure and found an existing issue as far as two parts. One, as far as the existing inlet that's there, there's no sidewalk in place around this inlet. And basically, to raise this inlet that's existing, would be basically needing to put a junction box in place where the sidewalk's located. Now, there is a second component part of it that has an off-site property owner, which is the Cherokee County Board of Education property, in which I've already had conversations with them, that they're more than willing to adhere to make improvements to their portion of property to achieve that runoff to our right-of-way. Because basically, what's, and you can see within your packet for attachments, the runoff from the upstream property owner is directly discharging into the right-of-way itself and not being conveyed through a structure system. So hence, during the investigations with the LMEG, that was found to be an issue, wanting to try to resolve this as soon as possible prior to the LMEG, which LMEG begins in, opening bid is June 16th.
Okay, anybody have a question? Comments? Okay, thank you. Yes?
And looking at these three bids, I'm just going back on a short history, and I don't mean to bring up an issue that might be a little bit controversial, but we got a bid of $23,628 as a low, and a high bid of $60,000, which is more than double, a good bit more. There's a huge spread there, and that was one of the reasons why we went to another source to do a study for the Laurel Canyon Fire Station.
Right. But on this one, you've got two rather fairly close together. 23 and 31 is not that really far apart. It's not like 600,000 and, I guess, million, two or three, or whatever it was. I don't know what that was. But you're right, I mean, there's some distance there. I mean, they could go back and do it again, if you felt strongly about it.
No, I'm very pleased with working with GDP in the past. I think they do great stuff. They've been very good to the city.
Anyone else? Mr. Grant?
If I'm reading this correctly, there was requests, since the LMEG deadline was the 16th, and our meeting was the 18th, that there were requests in preliminary approval. Is that correct?
I believe, Mr. McClure, please correct me, but I think the project can't hold for a formal vote on the 18th. Is that correct? I mean, it would be preferred to get started sooner rather than later, but we could wait.
Okay. Just wanted to ask. Thank you. Next item. Adam J., Discussion of the Application for a Public Safety Grant. Mr. Ingram?
Mayor and Council, I would like to make an apology, but the police department, upon further investigating some of the requirements of this grant, as well as speaking to a professional grant writer, have learned that some of the, if you will, the hoops that we'll have to jump through, and the research that we have to do involved with the application is going to be time prohibitive for us to apply for this. So I'd like to ask that we remove that from the next agenda.
Okay. Any other questions, anything about that? Okay. City Manager's Board, we're going to have a special recognition, and I will announce it anyway, Mark Crosby as the Building Official of the Year for the State of Georgia. That organization selected him as that. We will have a special announcement for that, really, at our next meeting. I understand his father got ill or something happened there. Under the Mayor's Report, Discussion Development of a Comprehensive Transportation Plan. We keep talking about our streets, and we mention this, seems like every month or two, we're talking about, you know, this street, or that street, or the other street. And we've got sort of a piecemeal arrangement of what some, the condition of some streets are, particularly the newer subdivisions that weren't, where they weren't finished or topped. But we really don't have an overall plan of list of our streets, what the real conditions are, and some sort of schedule of their maintenance requirements. And in addition to that, some source of funding to make those improvements on that schedule. To me, that's sort of what we need, and it's not gonna be cheap to do that, but it needs to be done, in my opinion. Mr. Patton and I spoke, and I think he had actually had part of it included in a budget or something in the past, and it didn't get taken care of for whatever reason. But I think, and I'd just like to say that, I think we need to look at including a certain amount of money for that type project in this upcoming 2016 budget. So I think we need to think about that pretty seriously. Anyone else have a comment? Okay. I will entertain a motion to adjourn to executive session. You have something? I'm sorry, go ahead.
I wanted to mention, this morning at the Cherokee Chamber of Commerce breakfast, Earl Matthew Thomas, our Economic Development Director, received a very high honor. He was named one of the Cherokee County's top 10 and 10, and we wanted, I wanted to make a point of congratulating him on that honor, and...
Congratulations. These are the young folks that you need to watch out for in the next 10 years. Seriously, I mean, that's what they said. They're gonna be moving up and making a lot of progress and contributing a tremendous amount to their community. So we're looking forward to Matthew being here and adding a lot to our area here. Congratulations again, Mr. Russ.
I just had one comment. Since we're recognizing our employees, I'd like to recognize Camille for the beautiful surroundings that we're sitting in. There was a lot of work to make this right, and I'm so impressed with the work that she did to make this room what it is today, because we all know what it was a year ago, and it wasn't very good. So thank you very much, Camille. We really appreciate your work to get this done. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Motion to adjourn to executive session, discuss real estate.
We have a motion to adjourn, and a second, to executive session to discuss real estate. All in favor, signify. I'm saying aye. Oppose, no? Okay, we are adjourned. We will not be coming back out for any, cast any vote. Okay, we can't hear you, Byron.